Anybody else for public comment? John, did you want to say something?
I might be in the wrong here, but while I was looking after my neighbor, you know, and my neighbor John Burden, I got two names, Gordon and Johnson, okay? And I do well with neighbor, okay? I'm a little guy at the park down in Perry, okay? First of all, your hardtop bump looks so first. And them young ones gotta come out of, five young ones come out of bump and check the bus down in Perry Town, work the road. I don't see why they can't take a bus in there. You can pave the road, which can't take a bus in there? What's the problem? If they ain't got no driving, let's take Tanja Crook in there. Fix the road to next night, Tanja Crook fix that hardtop, okay? What, what, I, I wanna know what's the problem? Five young ones coming, and that bus come by about half this morning, about six o'clock. They gotta check the bus about ten or fifteen minutes after six. What's the problem here? They had to pay, pay them just like they were about to have. You, you see? Would you will two young ones check the bus fifteen to six o'clock in the morning?
No, sir.
And bring them out, mom, haul them out, uh, a mom, and check the bus, and hit the paved road, and Tanja going in there? I, I took Tanja in there, I hauled ton in there, thirty years ago, cook bus just go in there, now it can't go in there? It's, it's a problem some more. We need to be looking in that problem, okay? Well, y'all just sit back in the corner. It ain't part of, it ain't serving y'all, okay? But them people need help. And we've got a fire hall down there, uh, tape, they put one of them old brook eye in, put the water in, put one of them old brook eye in. It takes thirty minutes to fill up the truck, car truck. Why they didn't put a fire hydrant in there? Well, that could fill up the truck truck. You may get used, come back there. Well, they went, they didn't put no fire hydrant in there in Perry, down there in Perry, you know, boy. I, I don't see what's the problem there. I mean, here, here, they can put a fire hydrant out in Calhoun, and can't put one out, okay? Okay, you take thirty minutes. See, I work in Health and Safety Department of Maryland, but all the here, that's good time. And that, while I would come and hear that, I'll tell you about my neighbor, okay? I don't wanna say my neighbor, but I know, okay? Only count we can't get no water in that truck, okay? Time you get, say you go down the road five miles, okay? Okay, that's gonna take you week, ten, fifteen minutes, okay? Time you get back, and then that, that thirty minutes, again, you looking at almost ninety minutes, I feel like, that person could be done gone before, before we get in, okay? Before we get back, okay? The truck's a crazy look up, we gotta go, we'll, five miles, actually pass the tape after first fire hydrant look up, the fire hydrant down in Perry. Get down out of, uh, Karen Crown, you know where Karen Crown is, after first one look up, and hit, that's only one look up worth, and they put that little brook eye in there, the tape. I kept asking, I kept asking, a long time, it's happened over the years, we get that in, and I don't see why we can't get a fire hydrant in there. I mean, and then a lot of people up and down the food道, need water too, and they can't even get water. It, it, what are you driving in there, okay?
Mr. Magus, has they got the, is it water down there where the, the fire hall is?
Yeah. You know, that's where the fire hall is, yeah.
They had water down the fire hall, but he's talking about the rest of Perry. He talked about the lack of fire hydrant.
Yeah, the water line they put in, down by the fire hall is too small to carry the water for a fire hydrant.
Now, hey, a six inch line, a six inch line, we got down here, all the way down, six inch line, okay? They got fire hydrants in there, boy. What, what the difference? Hey, you, one neighbor just a good, the next neighbor, y'all are just a good, God don't look, nobody else, no better, nowhere. He hugged everybody just the same. If I so mean, he still hug me, okay? Not one who should be. Is any of it funny? And down in Burntown, on the other end of Burntown down, they didn't hardtop hit, crack and go food道. They got their crackers going food道, okay? I mean, cracking crab and everything else on food道. They didn't hardtop back, they just went so first to bump and run out towards bump, and Calhoun, and can't even take a bus, they think they can.
Your name is John Burden?
What, what the matter, you boy? What, what, what am I doing? What, what, just sit back in the corner and not paying no attention to nobody? What, what, did y'all get out and drive around and look around? See?
I do, I do my own, and I do look at some of that in your area, and I just now figured out who you are. You probably remember me, me and you pushed snow several years down in there, and I was far view, you know, down in there together.
Is that all you, is that all you got for us today, John, you got?
Yeah, that was Burntown, okay? It worked that whole lot, yet they look weak to you. And they had to come down and fill on that. This guy, they had to get a tow truck pulling out. I tell you, get a tow truck, pull y'all a hose. Y'all don't wanna do that, they be sorry, they picking up, and that's not nice. Well, I can't see, they can't take that road food道, there ain't nobody kissing again or nothing. What, what's the problem here? Who attacked one of them? Who paid taxes? Everybody gotta pay taxes. And they talking about that money, your money, now, where, where the money go to? Where the money went, that them fire hydrant, they just put one intersection or somewhere, they will want to walk, help my neighbor a little bit, you know? Cut that down just a little bit. That's why, hey, that's why I just quit, as I am. I don't wanna go to the mall, I'm getting out of the house. I, I need to take y'all somewhere sometime. When somebody breaks down, I need to put it back, I can take it back a few times. And that's when I was trying to quit, trying to get some help there, you know? That's why we take back in the corner, okay? I'm a little bit there, I, I don't know what to say sometimes. But if I'm there helping, how long? Tell me, see what I can do. I can just do so much, okay? But I'm over giving you a hundred cents, okay? Okay, do that.
I'll talk to the school system about the bus and see if there's a reason.
I mean, they, they open them down too, and, and that road before it worked down, that needs fixed, and they pick them up and fix. And they paved them through there. Thirty years, it's been in the, playing thirty years, six, and here they ain't got that yet, and I don't know what's the matter. They can take a road over and pave and do this, do that, do this, do that. I ain't nobody, nobody else. But I want to be creative, just like you. Now, hey, if I said something, hope you tell me. I, I call my guy to you, okay? But I won't touch other things, okay?
You did good, John. Appreciate you, Governor. I'll see y'all have a good day. Good job.
Look, 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 yeah, fast. Must look in the fire hydrant, you must say look in the fire hydrant down there, that poor, poor thing, don't, don't make nothing sound.
Mr. Berry, I'll be in a meeting tomorrow with the PSA and the fire departments, and I'll work this out with them and see what we can do.
And they, they.
Did you say the six inch line was, is that what it has down there now?
It's gonna take me a while down through there, down by the fire hydrant.
Why did they say that they couldn't do that?
I thought it was because they put the smaller water line in. I'm down Perry, but.
They, they got to take me a while, that's the main line, okay?
Are you sure it's a six inch down that far?
Six inch line.
Okay, I'll check on that tomorrow.
Okay. Well, we need to look in there, I mean, you know, if, if that little, that little pipe that don't do it or something, I mean, you know?
Mr. Dingus, did you have that road up that he was talking about?
Yeah, he's talking about the.
On Google, or?
Uh, he, which one are you talking about? You talking about bunker?
The school bus.
Bunker.
Bunker, right.
Yeah. Is there any reason a bus can't go down through there?
There's a couple of switchbacks where it might be a little bit tough, but back in the day, they used to send the shorter bus down through there.
See, all the way down Drive Pretty. They ain't got no fire hydrant.
I was talking about the school bus situation there on, on that road.
Yeah, there, there's a couple of switchbacks, uh, towards, going towards the B line, that might be hard to navigate in a bus, but they might be able to, if they had a shorter bus, they might be able to navigate that pretty well. I'm sure they don't wanna. I, I would, I would still, and Frida had the right idea, I'd still just ask the school about why they're not doing that, especially for the kids out through there. I, I'd like to understand why.
I know it's a bridge, it's a bridge on the other end there.
Yeah, you think it's because of the bridge they want to go through there?
On the other end of walking like that. But you know what? They could take that bus, that bus used to turn down at the house before you get the bridge up there, by down the driveway, thirty years ago. Can't take it down? Set them on some. Hey, they think that's the department you, they're gonna call it, they even, and every time they buy a damn gas, they pay someone a tax, they go down to the grocery store, they pay someone a tax, they, they don't send back, they don't, not no idea. Join them the same and do you? Then you pull up the gas, hey, they don't say, school you will, and do this, and do that, do this.
No, sir.
Huh? Did that you?
I said, no, sir, that's right, they don't ask you.
Don't ask you that? I, I put, look in there, let's try to get some neighbor, okay?
Thank you, John.
I hate seeing my neighbor peed on, okay?
I appreciate it.
I'll give y'all a day, and then you'll ride around together. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else for citizen expression? Anybody else for citizen expression? Let's move on.
One thing I will, is the lady with the Humane Society, is that something we might pick up again next meeting, kind of discuss it a little bit on her request?
I think the best thing for them is to keep an eye out for any kind of grants or anything that we could help them win. I don't know, that might be left up to the budget committee this year too, see if we can find something. I'd like to have a, a specific need and a specific amount that they're looking for before I really consider getting any, any money.
I'll look at what that DMV tag money and see if that was sent and where it went, because they are getting bad, and that's a couple Spain eaters a year worth.
Yeah.
Mr. Skeen, I told Ms. Nash that I would send her the link to the Criminal Forest Community Fund that's open for applications right now, that's administered through the Nature Conservancy and UVA Wise for nonprofits to receive some money, so that would be a good thing. I think those applications are due in March, so we'll get that to them, and hopefully they might be able to put an application together.
All right, we'll move on to new business then. MECC Promise Program update, y'all ready? Thank you.
Good morning. Hi, Chris Westover, the president of Mountain Empire Community College, and to get to see some of you again, get to see some of you for the first time. This is Dr. Amy Greer, she's our vice president for institutional advancement and the foundation director. And I just, before I get started, I was gonna give you a quick update on our enrollment, I think we got a PowerPoint somewhere, but before I do, I just, I had handed these handouts, and I just kinda wanted to briefly explain them. We are, of course, lobbying for additional funding for the Virginia Community College System, which is the governing body for Mountain Empire Community College. We are one of twenty-three community colleges in the system. We are part of Region One, Go Virginia Region One, and we're working regionally. Our regional priorities are in conjunction with Virginia Highlands Community College, Withfield Community College, and Southwest Community College. That kinda makes up Region One. And our, our goals for talent pipeline expansion are really around healthcare, skilled trades, and transportation. And just some, just some information there to kinda help you in terms of what we're asking for overall statewide, it's a hundred and thirty-six, a hundred and thirty-six million dollar investment, ten million of that would flow to our region. And it would create basically a hundred, eight hundred and fifty additional trained workers, thirteen thousand throughout the state, you can kinda see Region One there. There are, that's really kinda specific to our region and to Mountain Empire, so we are really focusing on healthcare, skilled trades, and transportation. There are three key points on this handout that I kinda wanted to share with you for every dollar that, that supports a full-time equivalent student at a public university in Virginia. Universe, our community college students, VCCS students, receive fifty-seven cents. So that begs the question, really, why are our students so less important than a university student? Eighty-one percent of our graduates stay in their local communities or in the Commonwealth and contribute back to the economy. And our, our community colleges account for nearly half of the undergraduate enrollment in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So just some key points there to kinda help you, and if you have questions, or if you get questions about community colleges and their impact, and specifically related to Mountain Empire Community College, I'm gonna go through just a little enrollment update, some things that are happening in the college, and Dr. Greer's gonna give you a deep dive into the Promise Program that you have completely in health support.
Of course.
Thank you so much. I also wanna give a shout out to Frida Starnes, who is a local board member, and thank you for appointing him to our board, she has been a wonderful asset to the college, and got beat up a little bit this morning, but I wanna say that Frida does a great job, you know, for Scott County and for, and for Mountain Empire Community College too, and wanted to say that publicly.
Thank you, Dr. Westover, glad.
I so appreciate it, yes, she is a true asset to our college, we're appreciative. This, this is, it's kinda hard to see, so I've highlighted some big points here, but first I go through, our academic year starts in the fall of twenty twenty-four and goes through the summer of twenty twenty-five, so our academic year started last year, for last fall, and last fall, our enrollment were up a little bit. There are kinda some points here, the, the overall full-time enrollment, I know we typically see FTE and think of full-time employee, but for us, full-time enrollment is an FTE, and that's when a student takes fifteen credits, thirty throughout the year, fifteen per semester is an average, so thirty credits per year counts as like one FTE for the college. And that's really kinda what we're funded on, we're funded a little bit on headcount, but when we draw our FTE, that's really what keeps us, keeps our doors open and keeps us able to serve our communities. We were up about two point two six percent in terms of FTE in the fall, five point one percent for dual enrollment, so our dual enrollment really saw an increase, and about two percent, a little over two percent for our regular, traditional enrollment. Our headcount received actually a hundred more students in traditional enrollment, and fifty more, fifty-four more students in headcount in dual enrollment for an increase of almost five percent. And those two differ because oftentimes we'll have more students come to us, but sixty-two point four percent of our students are part-time, so they may not be taking a fifteen credit our load, they may be taking twelve, nine. Eighty percent of our students work in some form, some form or fashion, so oftentimes our headcount and our total FTE don't really align. For the spring, on this next slide here, we, we're up, I think the weather impacted us a little bit in January, just in terms of getting those, those students who wait for the last minute, waited a little bit too long this time, but we are still up, which is wonderful, given the weather and the impact that the weather had on our enrollment period. We're up nine FTE, just a little under one percent for our regular enrollment, we're actually up about five percent in dual enrollment, didn't affect our dual enrollment students as much, and one percent overall right now, and that's a point in time for the spring. We expect to end about two percent up. And then, of course, our headcount, same thing, we were up a little over two percent in our headcount, had fifty more students, almost fifty students more in regular enrollment this spring than we had the previous spring. What these numbers don't really show is our, is our workforce or our non-credit, I hate to call it non-credit because it's really workforce credit or career credit, but those students who are in programs that are designed to go straight employment, that, that coordinate in an industry-recognized credential rather than a degree or a certificate. And we have about a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty of those every year that go through our college, and they're in power lining programs, CDL programs, building and construction trades, some health sciences, CNA programs, and the like. Just to give you a little breakdown in terms of where students enroll and kinda where they come from, the dual enrollment piece is actually our largest breakup, but when you take dual enrollment, about seventy percent of those nine hundred and thirty-seven students are in arts and sciences, and about thirty percent are in a, a health science, industrial tech, or business technology program designed. And, and a lot of those students are taking the first two years of their four-year bachelor's degree, which is smart, because it saves them, as you can see on that handout, about twenty-four thousand dollars over their college career. In terms of our makeup, about nineteen, almost, actually about eighteen percent of our students come from Scott County, Wise is our largest figure, and it makes sense, because we're located in the middle of Wise County, but that just kinda gives you a breakdown of our enrollment by location for the twenty twenty-four academic year, twenty twenty-five academic year won't end until the end of the summer. The average age of our student is twenty-three, so if you take in dual enrollment out, that number jumps to about twenty-eight and a half. And that just gives you kind of a, an overview of our enrollment by race and gender, about two-thirds, almost two-thirds of our student population are female, that number is actually decreasing, we're, we're tracking with our applied programs and trades programs, we're attracting more male students, which is a good thing, so that might, the blue on that circuit, starting to get, the light blue is getting a little bit smaller, and the dark blue is getting a little bigger, which we're happy about. This next slide just kinda gives you, talk a little bit pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, the, the green line is our head, our FTE, and the red, or the blue line above is our, our headcount, and you can see the FTEs have kinda maintained a solid, even through the pandemic, and our, our headcount has kinda declined, and we're hopefully back on the incline right now in terms of getting more students in through our doors. Just in terms of how students take courses, pre-pandemic, we had less than half of our courses were, were internet-based or distance learning, and a little over half or around half were in-person, and then we had some mix for like in-person night. Private is where, then they come to campus four or five times during the semester and then do online a mix, and computer video is where it's completely online, and it's, but they have to have some type of, some type of media experience also. That has really shifted, as you can see here, post-pandemic, for fall of twenty twenty-four, over fifty percent, almost sixty, almost two-thirds of our enrollment are online, and students, that, that brings, it's good, it's bad, it, it sometimes hurts campus life and the population on campus, in, in terms of student success though, the, that shift, we've seen students maintain, oftentimes when students go from in-person to a web-based, they don't do as well, and we've seen not really a decline in, in grades or in performance by students in that shift, so that's positive. And another big piece of that web is our dual enrollment, so if a student can't, we dual enrollment, we share the faculty members with our high schools, and if a high school has a, a faculty member who can be credentialed to teach a college-level course, then we'll use that high school instructor, and if they don't, then the student has the opportunity to come to Mountain Empire and, and take the class online with a, with a college instructor, and so that really has increased our web enrollment as well, because a lot of students take advantage of that. And with that, I am going to shift, and then we will hold questions till the end, turn it over to Dr. Greer to dive into the Promise Program.
Good morning. Glad to be with you this morning. I just wanna mention too, I'm a Scott County resident, and I follow Hurricane, Mr. Arns and Mr. Dingus came to my house because I had pretty significant property damage, so I thank them for what they do, and it's very pretty good to be here with you this morning. If you're not familiar with our Promise Program, it is offered to high school graduates, beginning with the high school graduating class of twenty twenty-three, and it provides tuition coverage only for high school graduates if they need the following criteria. Okay, they must maintain a two-point-oh GPA while they're in college, they need to be continuously enrolled up to two years for seventy-two credit hours, and what that means is some students come to us with dual enrollment credits, as Dr. Westover mentioned, you can take up to seventy-two credit hours, which is the equivalent of an associate's degree. We don't let them go beyond that. They must reside in our service area and provide proof of residency, so this program is not extended to Tennessee residents, even if they attend Scott County schools. They must complete the federal financial aid form, which is a requirement, this is a last-dollar scholarship for students, we need to make sure that they have qualified for all available assistance to them, both federal and state, before we kick in with additional scholarship money and your contributions. They must also complete a scholarship application annually. We have about a hundred and sixty private scholarships established at MECC, and a student from Scott County may qualify for one of those scholarships, we would apply that first before using Promise Program funds. Something that's not listed on this screen, that's also a requirement, we try very hard, it's a requirement, not all students do this, we require students to write a thank you note. We think that is the least they can do. If they're receiving scholarship funds, often through donors who have given to contribute to their education, they'll write that donor a thank you for that investment in their education. So, last year we came to you, it was the first year of the program, and we were concerned because we didn't have the number of students, I think, qualifying for Promise. They may have graduated from a Scott County school, but they didn't complete those steps that I've just talked about, for whatever reason. I'm pleased to come back to you and say, we've gotten those percentages up, and the number of students, or percentage of students that are coming to us from high school and are graduating, and qualifying for the Promise Program. I think we've got a little work to do at Rock Cove, and I think at least Mr. Skeen, your supervisor, and Mr. Biggers have agreed to visit a couple of the Scott County high schools during our financial aid workshops, and encourage students to take advantage of this opportunity. Really, we can go into detail about this, but I think it, it, sometimes it's a parent issue, and we can talk further about that. Sometimes it's just a matter of completing federal financial assistance forms, which can be an obstacle, but we do help them in that. So, just very quick. So just very quickly, some of the things that we do to provide students with opportunities to complete those necessary steps to qualify for the program. As a college, we have career coaches that work in Gate City, Twin Springs, and Rock Cove at least one day per week, if not two days. But those career coaches are assisting your guidance counselors with the basic responsibilities of helping encourage students to get college-ready through completing their FAFSA, completing the coursework needed to enter college. So we do do that. We also hold regular financial aid workshops. It's free to parents. We do that during the day, sometimes at night as well. We encourage parents to come with their student because students' financial aid is often based on their parents' income. They don't have that information, they really need their parents to help them, okay? We also provide background services for our students that are enrolled at Mountain Empire. That includes tutoring. If they qualify and have an emergency need, such as a housing issue, a broken-down car, can't pay for their internet, we'll help with that. We have money set aside annually for emergency student needs. We have a food pantry, we have a clothes closet. We do everything that we can to make sure that students are successful, and we encourage them to take advantage of those resources. So the other thing that we do specifically for high school students, if they have not completed those steps that I talked about, we send a postcard to their home address. We hope that gets the parents' attention, that we have on there, you haven't completed your FAFSA, you haven't turned in this particular form. So we let that know by mail, as well as multiple emails, that you've got a few more steps before August first in order to qualify. Does anyone have any questions before I go further? So this is just a breakdown of the number of students that are attending Mountain Empire from Scott County. And 2024, let's just look at Gate City High School. We had approximately a hundred and forty-nine high school graduates. Twenty-two of those students came to Mountain Empire. That number would actually be a little bit higher because it does not include our workforce classes, which may be CDL and power alignment programs. Those are quite successful programs, too. Okay? Out of that twenty-two that came to us for credit classes, sixteen qualified for the PROMIS program. They did all the things that they were supposed to do in order to qualify. And then, from there, in the spring of 2025, we had nine returning students. Okay? So let's talk about some of the reasons we have a decrease between fall of 2024 and the spring of 2025. What we've learned from looking at our graduates from 2023 that were enrolled in the PROMIS program is that about twenty-two percent actually have completed within their first semester or first year their certificate program or their associate's degree. They may have completed dual enrollment courses just enough that they don't have to take a full year in order to graduate and go on and transfer to a four-year university. For the rest of them, some of those students drop below full-time, okay? And we require, as part of the PROMIS program, if you're a high school graduate entering Mountain Empire, we want you to take classes full-time because we want you to finish in two years or less. That's really important, okay? And then twenty-six percent drop below that two-point-oh GPA. In college, we do expect students to work, right? That's a little different than high school sometimes, they have a hard time adjusting. And hopefully, they'll come back as adults and maybe re-enter and try again. But sometimes students do struggle with that first semester in college, okay? For whatever reason, fifteen percent of those students didn't complete the scholarship application for the second year. We can work on that to remind students over and over again, and we do, but we'll take responsibility for that. Mr. Steen and I have talked about, sometimes you can't force a student to do the things that they need to do, that's just part of growing up and being an adult. So two years ago, I came to you and asked for money from Scott County, the approximate amount that we thought a student or the group of students from Scott County would have to pay out-of-pocket for tuition coverage for high school graduates. We estimated that to be about forty-three thousand, based on the last three years of data that we had. Since that time, since we implemented, we've only spent about twenty-four thousand of your money. Here's how we're able to do that. When we initially announced the PROMIS program, we applied for a grant through the Ann and Jean World Foundation. And that grant provided us with a gift of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which was given to us over a three-year period. Instead of spending that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, we put it in the bank. We have an investment manager that manages all of the foundation funds, and we only spend the interest from that investment, okay? Only spending the interest means that this program will be here forever and ever. And so we had to have a little bit of time to build that interest, to have enough money generated and income each year, so that we didn't have to come back to you and ask for additional money. And luckily, we've been able to do that, right? We've had an increase in enrollment, we've seen that already. We know that more students are attending Mountain Empire. Our goal for this program, number one from day one, we lag behind, our region lags behind the rest of the state in educational attainment. And if we don't do something to fix that, it is difficult for our region to compete economically. So it's really important that we have workers, but it's more important that we have skilled workers, right? So, and that's what your industries, your commodities, your VMPs are looking for, skilled workers. We're here to train them to do that. So we've spent that twenty-five thousand. We know that we're going to have some interest available next year to help fund the PROMIS program. I'm going to make a request today, if you would consider, to look at maybe an additional ten thousand dollars that not only help fund that program, just ten thousand dollars, not the full forty-three, ten thousand dollars would help fund this program, but also make available, hopefully, some additional funds for dual enrollment students or adults returning to, to college. Really, it's our adults that struggle the most in paying for college sometimes because they're working. And when you're working, you don't qualify for the federal financial aid fund, right? That's based on your poverty level. It's our adults that are having to pay out-of-pocket. So we'd like to create a fund that assists Scott County adults returning to college. We can work out the details. We have a lot of scholarships already in place that assist Scott County students, but some additional funding specifically for adult students would go a long way to assist, I think, in raising that educational attainment level. I think that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I'm sure Dr. Westover will be soon.
Yeah, just as a parent, we'll hopefully one day go to Mountain Empire or somewhere else if they can make. What's the best thing I can do to prepare my kids for this? And what's the best thing I can do to, to help them when they get old enough to apply for programs like this?
While they're in school, probably honestly, my, my suggestion would be make sure that they take as much math and English as they can, because those are the two big barriers to success in college. Math and English are the two big ones. Encourage them to take as much dual enrollment as they can, or as they're comfortable taking, because they're, they're still, they're still students, they're still, you know, they're still children, and you want them to have that experience. And so, you know, there's, there can be too much college, and I've seen some high school students who are very, very motivated, who, who sometimes bite off more than really that they can chew. But dual enrollment is a great option. And I would say, really kind of go with your student when you go to college visits, when you talk about enrollment, and, and recognize that most students who are eighteen years old are going to need their parents' income information if they want to apply for scholarships or to receive any type of federal financial aid. And oftentimes, that's easier for the parent to navigate than the student, because the student hasn't been paying bills and doesn't understand always the finances of the home.
One thing I might add is, something I find with our students, they've lived here all their life for the most part, they really don't understand the jobs that are available right here in our county, or even across the state line. They can stay here and make a really good living, but they don't know, they might drive by VFP or commodities every day and not understand what's going on in those places. So, you know, I think as a region, we need to do a better job of selling to, to our young people the tremendous opportunities that are available in healthcare and manufacturing. It used to be in my generation that you were told to go to college, right? And you didn't really have a plan for what to do, you just hoped you kind of had a job at the end. I want our students to realize there are really good jobs available here. It may not be that four-year degree that they need. A power lining student can finish in about fifteen weeks and make, what, between forty, fifty thousand dollars to start, and if they're willing to travel, they can make six figures. So understand, we support four-year education, absolutely, but you can do great things going to community college. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all, we appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have a date, Mr. Councilor?
Hey. Okay. I will, I was thinking, as they were speaking for Mountain Empire there, your question you asked, I have a daughter that attended Lehigh, and at the conclusion of her graduation, she had seventy-eight college credits with the dual credit system. Went to, she's at University of Tennessee, and because she took all those classes, she only had one basic class that she had to take in her time there. And spring, I'm proud she's going to graduate with a degree in architecture, a minor in business, and a minor in interior design, which is, she had not taken all that at Mountain Empire, she would have never had all that in that time. And I went to Mountain Empire years ago, we're pretty in there in the interior program, too, so I started out there as well, so just give them a little play as well. Okay, so y'all had a long morning and everything, and I'm going to try not to be too long myself. I feel like I'm family with you as much as I've been here now. So one thing I'm going to do is, while I'm doing this, and y'all sit there, let's stand up, and y'all stand up and stretch a second there. Come on, stand up, stand up. Y'all need to stand up and stretch for just a second.
I know you were.
Yeah.
I took the board over it.
Yeah.
It wasn't worth it.
Yeah, just giving the chance, the screen's there, I know I was starting to do this. Okay, so I can, I can be pretty, pretty brief, really, on going over what I have for you. Obviously, if you've been on planet Earth and in this area in the last month or so, you know that everything's been pretty well dominated with snow removal, and so that's been the big thing that we've had going on. We've, in Scott County alone, just done some rough calculations with contractors, our employees, and with our wage employees that come in and work with snow for us. I think that we've probably been around six thousand man-hours in the snow season, six, you know, right after Christmas and through month of January. We had ten events in January that we worked. And I think that all that, there was like about a week and a half solid, and we probably got about fifteen, sixteen snow days that we've had to work there with that. So as we, as we always know, and I'm always thankful for Ms. Peggy reminding me, that we have gravel roads that we have to deal with. And so there, this time of the year brings a lot of challenge to us. And so I gave you a list that's there. These are roads that we've had either come, some of them, Mr. Steen does a good job communicating to us things that he gets in, had some from Ms. Glover's as well that's come in, and a few others that have come in through work orders. And so if you will notice, we, in the last week or so, turned a lot of work off on doing maintenance and putting gravel on the roadways. And we've been, you know, a lot of work orders come in, people say that the roads are, you know, muddy and, and that kind of thing. So I, I do want to kind of explain just a little bit about our mindset in dealing with the gravel roads in this time of year. So when, when they're frozen, like when the deep freeze happened, about all we can do is put the, the stone on, on top of them to try to provide a little traction that's in there with it, to try to help with vehicles. A lot of folks say, well, why don't you just go and put, go ahead and just put the replacement stone right on top of the ice, and then, you know, it'll be there when it thaws out. Well, the problem with that is that if you notice, you know, about anything like that is out in your yards or anything, is that when that thaw occurs, and then you've got to pressure the traffic, that the stone that we put there, it just pushes it right down into the, the surface, so we lose a lot of the benefit for it with that. And then you've got the potholes that are there as well, and so, you know, we get requests like, cut, road needs to be bladed, it needs stucced. Well, honestly, folks, we have to let those roads dry outside before we can really make a lot of benefit to them. And I know that that causes a lot of pain for folks to have to kind of endure some, you know, muddy conditions and things there like that that you deal with that are, you know, not what any of us like. But we really are kind of just spinning our wheels, really, if we just don't wait and let some of these roads dry out. So then we have, you know, a couple inches of rain last week as well, so we've kind of had, if we've not had rain, we've had snow. But we are getting just a little bit of a break, and so we are trying to do what we can and shake them up, and we will continue to, to do that. And please know again, as spring gets closer and things start drying up even more, we do have it planned that we will, you know, work further on these roads. We really can't make the, the hard cut with the motor grader like we would like to make on there, otherwise they will be, they would red up, and then it'd just be like tire tracks like you see in the field that's going, go through there. So, so that's kind of what we're doing. We, we will be trying to work on spot locations where we can, and then do more maintenance to them as we get toward this, this spring. I will mention, just a couple of things, it's on here, is on Lizzie Road, we've completed the work there.
I got a phone call from Mr. Kessler yesterday, he, he wanted me to tell him he appreciates everything you guys have been doing out there.
Thank you.
He was very pleased. He said he's been trying for years and years and years to get those streets set there. He said, "Thank you."
Thank you. Then also, the low-water bridge is Mr. Steen. We, we did go in and remove the debris, and then the rain that just happened brought more debris back, and so we're sending them back in in order to try to remove that debris that just happened there. So that just kind of occurred, but we, we are working on taking care of that. On the front sheet of page, I'm going to go down. we've got March on there, but I'm gonna say spring is what our plan is to get those started. And just for a reminder, the Ann Cooper, Ann Good Cooper Road, that's 1.6 miles of roadway that we'll be constructing there. The Eaton Hill is .56, Horton Summit is .56, and then we have one of the phases of Obie's Creek that will be in, in the fall. Now, these projects will probably run all summer. I don't know whether or not they will get the asphalt surface on them or not, but it will be our goal on the three that's listed in March to try and get them at least to have a tar and chip surface on it to lay through the winter and then pave the, then the following spring if, you know, in the worst case scenario. So, in other words, we will, our goal will be to get those folks out of the dust and move it by the end of the construction season. Okay, on the backside, it's just the information on the work orders, just to share it with you a little bit. I asked Eric that's with me, he does my report and does, does well getting that information on the last minute, I asked him to put the January information on there. So, kind of to show you with where that we're dealing with, like letting the, you know, roads dry out and then try to address them where we can. And from October through December, need gravel added. We had 54 work orders there with that, there are still 12 that are open there with that that are part of this whole process of them needing, you know, to dry up and get more attention later. And then there are 11 that have come in in January. So, as you see here, Steen, we've got like 23 out there, you may get calls or whatever, but hopefully you can kind of, if you do, you can explain to folks kind of what our strategy is that, that, because we do talk to folks, but sometimes, as you know, they, they, you know, naturally want it now, you know, instead of later. So, that's quite a bit of the work that we, that we have that's going on, that's working on the gravel roads. We also, as we can, we're working on, on the mainline roads, getting potholes patched as we can, trying to do a little tree work as, as possible too, but the emphasis has certainly been the snow weather and then now, when we get a chance, we do have a great big part of our workforce working on gravel, gravel roads. So, with that, just see if we have anything else that you want to mention or add to our list and we will take it and check into it. Oh, Mr. Manus, one thing, excuse me, one thing from your discussion last week and in our prior discussion, the entire, the speed limit of that zone down there in Duffield will be added into our whole review of that area down there through the coming in of Duffield, that school and everything.
That's good to hear. Also brought up while we were up there, the possibility we get some sidewalks from Thomas County down to H and G, folks have wore a path through there already and so it's, it's a natural path that's kind of humped up, so.
And that's something that probably have to kind of live through for some kind of grant or something to come through.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Make you aware.
Yeah, I'm aware, thank you.
Yes, sir. The federal project, payment project for Devils Betta Road to Hana in that area, is that still, what's the status of that?
It's still in the status, we are, we have some work, we're still working, we're trying to get some clearance with, with the Division of Forestry on cutting trees and so we've got our environmental folks trying to step that up and see where it is. As soon as I know more, I will let you know by email or call, give you an update on that. Okay?
The other thing, I want to remind the board that Webb Road, which he's got on his list here, they put gravel out, that is a road that was asked to be abandoned at our last meeting and we determined there was emergency vehicle usage needs for that area, so they have corrected that and added gravel, so appreciate that.
Got a phone call from Mr. Hobbs last night. The New Harland Church Lane, is there a possibility, I know you went up there, you worked on it, but you did patches of gravel, is there a possibility that we can gravel the whole entire section of that eventually?
That's something that, yeah, we will look at. I'm not going to commit to, because, you know, we've got resources and things of the overall need, but that, that's what I was talking about when I said that we are, right now, we're just trying to just double spots and everything and kind of get things kind of roughed back in and then we've got a lot that's like that that we probably will do, you know, some more, but again, we will, you know, we kind of prioritize that on, you know, on traffic volumes and things of that nature to go to, you know, see how much, you know, balance out those resources.
I believe Ms. Thompson had a question.
Hey, could they just put the gravel in the tracks, you know, put a board in the middle?
No.
I mean, it would go, it would go farther.
I know, it's just too hard to do. We just don't have the equipment set to do that.
Oh, it just takes a board to put in? My brother does it.
Yeah.
Okay. And like she said, you know, they're patches, but, okay.
We'll, we'll keep, I'll keep you taken care of until, what, 2029, okay?
Oh, no, it's supposed to be 2027.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have it written. All right, 2027.
I have one more thing, and this may blow your mind, but Mr. Hobbs said 51 years ago, his grandmother, Faith Hobbs, put that road, which was Route 694 at the time, on the six-year plan, 51 years ago.
10 years, yeah.
And nothing was done about it, so. I know that's mind-blowing and all this, but what, why was it taken off of the six-year plan? Is there a reason why?
I don't know that far back, but I do, you know, that's a little, well, no, I was born then, but anyway.
I wouldn't have seen me through.
Yeah, okay, well, I was around, I was around. Okay, so anyway, the thing that I can tell you with experience now, having been in this now for about 36 years and around it, is that there was once a time when if a person came in and they wanted their road on the six-year plan, then the easy political decision was, we will put you on the six-year plan. You were on the plan, but there was no funding. And so, as like I've said there, I think before I was in, I worked, this job had it in Russell County back in the 90s and there was a period of time that every gravel road in Russell County was on the six-year plan. And so, they were just put on there and so somebody would say, okay, I want to be on the six-year plan, we were on the six-year plan, but it wasn't realistic. So, in mid 2000s, around 2008, 10, the leadership that we had in Richmond said, we're going to have a six-year plan that is realistic and one that can be funded. And so, that was the result of, at that time, many roads had to be taken off because they were just sent in on the funding. So, what we asked to do when that happened and Ms. Starnes, you know, we've worked on it here, we, even in the time, we had a priority listing at the county level that we went through and we would put them on that list and then once we went through and had those funded, built, whatever, and then when funds were available, then we would pull from that list and then insert that road in the, the other plan. So, that's kind of how the tech's kind of come about of trying to make it, but it was just a plan, it wasn't functional.
Okay.
You're talking about the six-year plan?
Yeah.
Birdtown's got on 35-year plan and it ain't done yet. So, you know what I have to do, I might have to write, bumping, they had to write criminal death, criminal death of Prairie Dead to get that road there done, that's the name of the bump, that's where they got it in. Well, I might have to write criminal to get the Birdtown dead, don't wipe that, son, don't wipe it up. Well, you have to take a tow truck, pull you out, never hung out, that, that's uncalled for, that's uncalled for, that should have been picked a long time ago. And ain't nobody in Jersey or nothing, that don't work, all the way through. Well, what, what the devil's about, son? Tell me something, tell me something.
Well, that road just, it's not on the six-year plan.
Hey, I used to work for B-Dog.
I know, I remember.
And I tried everything to do, just trying to get it fixed, you know what they do, they poke me on the bug every time I turn them out, just like now, you throw me on the bug. And I might get poked on the bug, son, it hurt. And that road got more drag on it and they went and paved both and they got no drag at all on it, but the one hadn't paved. What, what the devil's about? Well, come up to the car for me sometime, you, you hollering about six-year plan and this and that, I'm getting tired of that six-year plan, that's a 35-year plan.
I understand.
Do what? Talk to anybody. I think that's just what I give my head.
I think that you all understand the process that, that we use, that's all I can say at this point. Okay, you all got anything else for me?
They, everybody, they were there on the Amber Spring Road and went up through there around Christmas time, I seen where they put a couple loads of rock and all it, I don't know what they done, Derek just know, I talked to anybody on there.
Well, they did work on, on it some last week, but that's another one that they'll be further worked out on later.
Third road down there, it's a driveway there on 65, it's at Mill Creek.
Okay.
What it is, they don't gravel, their driveway don't think it's ever had any gravel on it. And the water runs down off the hill on Highway 65 in the curve. And the other day, I was down there, I guess it was last Friday, and the water was running across the road and up the side of the road where the road was killed. About 200 feet, then it was running back across the road there for about 60 feet, the road was plum on your lane plus halfway across. They don't have a tile with the driveway for it to run down the ditches, it's been like that ever since the driveway's been built, I don't think 20, 20 years or longer. And it's kind of a road hazard, it kind of didn't occur and I've called it in before, but nobody's ever done nothing about it.
We'll, we'll get it checked, you know, normally the driveway tiles are the responsibility of the property owner, but we'll get it checked into.
Okay. And they're done, they've done a pretty good job, this spot, putting extra gravel in places and this, that, and the other. I've, I've seen, y'all really been working on it, consider the trees that we've had and the road thing, I'd have to say y'all done about as good as you can do with the man fire you got.
Thank you, I'm, I'm very proud of our folks, they, they've worked a lot, a lot of hours and hard and it's, you know, a lot of safety issues goes into that too and thankful that we've not really had anybody, you know, had any injuries and.
Trees is dangerous junk.
Handler Spring Road, Mr. Sabatino had provided a turner spot there on his property for the bus to turn and we've spoken about the, maybe improving that drain tile, extending it out, it's a hazard I think at this point with the bus turning and it's a drop-off, so if you could address it or check that out.
We do, like I said, we've just, we've been trying to focus on just, you know, maintenance things now and, you know, get a little driveway there, try to work on some of these things.
Can I see one more place?
Sure.
Cox's Chapel out there, it's got a soft spot in it on the dirt side, the high school side, of course, I'm sure there are a lot of soft spots on a lot of these dirt roads and I seen there last night, tomorrow we're supposed to get a week's worth of rain, rain every day to next Thursday, Saturday.
Okay.
If we'll check.
And we'll keep, we will and as soon as we don't get everything taken care of now, I mean, we're gonna keep, keep digging after it.
Yeah, I've been digging, I'll have to say that, I mean, I thank you, okay?
Thank you, sir. Y'all need anything else? Okay, then let's see, it's February and probably come back around May or June, okay? I guess next trip I'll do, we will have to be thinking about, for the coming nights, we'll be updating the plan. So, I always am kind of right at the last minute of getting that done, so if we can try to get that accomplished a little earlier, what we're gonna do will be helpful.
I'll have them start that process in March, that way it's done ahead of time.
All right, thank you.
One thing I did, I noticed you were gonna, I think, talk about smart scale applications.
I'm not saying she's gonna go over.
Well, I just wanted to get your opinion on a couple and I know there's a process. The Clinchfort intersection with 23, do you think that's a potential project?
I think that that is a good project, that's a good realignment. When we've had discussions about it, it's, it is, it's just a matter of she, I'm sure she can touch on how these projects score. There are a lot of good projects, but the scoring and everything is what becomes the factor and.
The other thing is Highway 72 in Flat Woods, you know, those switchbacks, would that be a potential smart scale?
I think that one's gonna be difficult for it to score very well.
Okay, thank you.
Because of the economic impacts and things that's there that you have to score on.
Those are high percentages too.
Yeah. Okay, folks, good to see you all.
Thanks, we're gonna review the B-Dog smart scale. Can we do this right quick? Stuff off to the plate, sorry.
I'm just having a couple slides, it won't be long.